Light twelve panel. So essentially it would be to get a lift or ladder to re, you know, connect that power supply is probably the biggest issue you'll find. And as Joe said, it comes with a four percent spare parts package. So if for some reason that lacrosse ball does damage an LED, again, as he mentioned, it's an Allen wrench, twist, pull off, put the new one in. And then Joe didn't mention it, but with both the video boards too, you know, we can remote Bomb Guard into the system so we can diagnose what the issue is from afar. So we can determine if it makes sense to bring a tech out or determine if it's something, you know, somebody within the district could handle, which is unique to our company.
Any other question?
I have one if no one else has. You talked about going out and get sponsorships.
Yes, sir.
How many sponsors do you need to support the costs of the boards?
Yep. So we're looking at if we can secure six of the anchor spots, which is our top total, and then half of the eight of the founding, it's going to be a cost negative over a five year, or net zero over a five year period. So it's going to pay for itself.
And if you don't get the number of sponsors you want?
Then that's, it's just a best case gesture. Again, I didn't mention it before, but obviously working on our sports marketing, every dollar we help you raise, you keep. We don't take a cut, a split or a fee. Obviously, it's our goal to get you a project that's above and beyond what a lot of districts are doing. But it's one of those where I think if we don't do our due diligence, and we've kind of already done that with Dr. Supon and his team, feel pretty confident. We've only had two conversations. One of those is committing to the project and is willing to bring people to the table. But if for some unforeseen circumstances, it doesn't happen, there's no real cost other than time and attention. But on the flip side, going out to the community, you know, it's one of those where you want to kind of keep the foot on the pedal so that those who have been generous enough to commit to the project, you know, we're not selling them an idea that ultimately is going to not happen at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I do have a question. So when you opened up your presentation, it looks like you're asking the board's permission to go out and kind of solicit some.
Yeah, just, this is a discussion to see what, what the thoughts of the board are. Again, this is one where we've done it in plenty of other places. I think it's one of those in talking with Dr. Supon, it's, it's a goal to have something that's exciting for the district from a community center standpoint, something that's going to be beneficial for, you know, the student activity standpoint from the classroom component. And then ultimately, you know, in talking with only two of your sponsors, it seems like the community is seeing it as a value add as well. So.
At this time, at this time, it appears there's no cost to the district, correct?
No, that's, again, we were asked to just kind of present it to the group and get thoughts and feelings. And basically, one of those, if we can show that it is being successful, whatever success looks like to the district, that we move forward because again, it's one of those where, you know, talking to the right two people initially is great, but don't want to get it to the point where it's overconfidence, where we're telling him it's going to happen and then it isn't. Again, it's, it's no kind of bad downside. Just if you're looking for additional projects down the line, they're probably not going to be the best people to approach. But yeah, no cost right now. Really, it's just, if we can go out and continue this momentum we have already and/or, you know, maybe feel out if there's any other targets that you may have in the back of your mind for potential sponsors.
Does anyone have a problem with Daktronics approaching any of our constituents?
No, I say go ahead, give it a try.
Well, I would say too, maybe the only kind of confirmation we were looking for is obviously we broke down the cost of the project over a five year period. Ultimately, it's something where we're trying to get sponsors to see that liability and break it down over five years. But would the district be willing if in agreements we have that paying for itself, would you buy it outright and use those contracts to pay yourself back? It's probably the only commitment we'd look to kind of figure out here tonight if at all possible.
I would say what's bringing this on us and the finance management, we would have to get back with you on that.
For sure. Yeah, no question.
Especially right now with no state budget.
Yeah, no, no worries. And it's one of those too. We're just kind of feeling out, you know, we talked about a little bit of those promotions before the end of the year. And then ultimately, probably maybe holding off on the gas pedal with meeting with future sponsors. Because again, we're trying to figure out the, the rules of the game before we kick off and knowing what we can or cannot approach sponsors with. So it's one of those where we'll kind of wait to hear if that is something that we can approve and move forward with. Just so that we're not approaching your businesses to say this is going to happen, just to maybe not be successful at the end of the day.
I'm just curious, are the, you said six anchors?
Yep.
And half of the founders is your target, your goal?
It is. Yep. And there's, yep.
If, are the boards adaptable? Let's say you had a business out there that wanted to do more than that. Is it adaptable that one board could be a sponsor?
So the one board that can be adapted in that scenario would be the indoor boards, the video board, and then we have a secondary fixed digit on the opposite end. The stadium and the baseball, it is not feasible from a structural standpoint. We had to work within the same footprint of what is already up there engineering wise. Would love to say we can add whatever we want wind load wise, but we're kind of hamstrung by the overall footprint of what was already up there.
And, and we have worked with other facilities, one currently, that we could add additional signage in your stadium, just may not be on the video.
Mm hmm. What are everyone's thoughts, concerns?
I'd like to say go ahead, try to get as many sponsors as you can at this point. I mean, if it could pay for itself, I think it's beneficial for you guys, us and the community. So.
I think that the biggest point, we appreciate that, and being somebody who was a former athletic director, and it's been athletics, and I talked to Dr. Supon quite a bit, and Pete's touched on it, is just trying to understand some of the timelines with it. Because as we approach people, like we have two people that are going to make a commitment right now in two simple conversations for a hundred thousand dollars. And if we, if, do we need to get to two hundred thousand dollars? Like, what is, what is the timeline for that being done? Is this something that could happen on this side of the calendar? Because then that helps us with our game plan. That helps you as a school because you may qualify for some of the incentives, whether it's warranty, whether it's finance, whether it's an additional discount on equipment, or is this going to go into next calendar year? So we can tell the sponsors that. So we go in and say, hey, this is what we're presenting, the anchor partnerships are what we're going to hit up first, that the school is committed by it, that we're not on a fishing expedition, we're actually, we're actually working with the school district to get this done, that we were able to go out and say, hey, this is going to be installed spring of 2026. We have six to sell. That if you're not part of the six, it may go to one of your competitors. And then their expectations are going to be that this is going to be installed spring of 2026. Or if we're going to say the fall of 2026, whatever that is, at least that we have some sort of foundation when we're working with the school district, with Dr. Supon's team, with the athletic director, maybe some folks here, that we're able to give a concrete answer that yes, this is going to happen. Yes, we have two commitments already. Are you willing to sign up with the school here and take one of those fourth partnerships? So that's, that's always the key to me when you're meeting with these things or going out, working with the school district, with sponsorships, with athletics, is, is being able to sit there and say, hey, this is the concrete plan versus, hey, now we're on a fishing expedition, that it may happen, and then oh, by the way, if it doesn't happen, you know, you're, you're just still making that commitment for X amount of months. It's not fair to the sponsor. So that's kind of the asking part of this discussion would be just kind of clearing a pathway of, one, is this what you want to do? And then two, if it's yes, when do we want to do it? And then that just helps our team in Daktronic to work with Dr. Supon.
So I definitely want to be very clear going forward before any other of my colleagues answer your question that this is not a formal vote, and this is not a formal answer. And I will give you my opinion, I would like to see this go by June, like start by June of next year.
Okay.
As long as our creative finance manager could figure something out for us. But, you know, I, I don't think that, I don't know this for a fact, but I don't know if we'd be able to afford the whole project all at once. You know, so maybe we start small and go big. I do have one question, though. If, if this district ever decides to expand or relocate, and we wanted to move a building or move, change a building, close a building, do we have the capability of that?
We've had those discussions in, in the indoor, and I've, and I've talked with everybody. It's like anything else. If you, if you put it up on the wall, you can take it down off the wall, and you can, you can transport it and go from there. Football, the same thing. You can put it up on, you know, it's going on the structure, come off the structure. I think the big thing, you know, moving forward is when that goes, the, the big thing with these boards are the technology. The technology changes quicker than the equipment gets worn out. So the simple answer is yes. But when you're going into these new facilities, like we're designing these to fit these facilities right now. We get a bigger and better indoor facility, a bigger, better, you know, outdoor football stadium. It may be a situation that we have those conversations then as far as if you want to, you know, have, have new. So it can be done, just depends on the timeline and where we're at technology.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question about, you said the hardware was roughly four hundred thousand for, for the equipment?
And installation.
And install, that includes?
That's giving you content, that's giving you shipping, that's giving you.
So if we had zero sponsors, the total cost of the district would be four hundred thousand?
Correct. Yes.
Right? Okay. So the, the difficulty I have without being able to go out and sort of look for sponsors is we really don't know, other than the maximum amount will be four hundred thousand, if the cost to the district after the year will be four hundred thousand or whatever, depending on the amount of, you know, amount of sponsors we get. So it's kind of hard to chicken or egg.
No, that's, that's why we brought it up for discussion because.
That's why we have it, like Pete's point, like, if you want to just share like the Getty's story, I think that's.
Well, I, I was just going to mention too, just, just, is it fair to say we, when we are given the blessing to continue a sponsor conversations, can we still approach them with the concept of asking for a $10,000 commitment for a five year term? Is kind of maybe the chicken or the egg discussion which would make the most sense. Otherwise, if it's, hey, a $50,000 check upfront, that's just the rules of the game and parameters we need to work within. We just break it down, ideally in the conversations I've had, so that the budgets can, you know, as an organization can withstand that as a kind of a, it's something they didn't see coming. So they needed to free up some cash to basically provide for this opportunity. So until we, I think, have any clarity on that, you know, I don't know what we would tell a sponsor when they say, well, how much is the commitment for us to become a part of this project? I know, it's, it's, that's why we brought it up for discussion.
I was just going to add one thing in, and I think the board needs to consider it perhaps this way. I go to games, I look at these scoreboards. I never really gave it a thought of how many of them are, the technologies come ahead, or wow, that's going to need to be changed here very shortly. And I think the, this board needs to consider that. Not so much if this is necessary, but when is it necessary?
Sure.
And so there's going to be an outlay of, of, there's either going to be an outlay of money by the district to replace boards, or we're going to find a way to do it with some sponsorship money, or maybe some combination thereof.
And, and without question.
A splitter, a fee, obviously. It's our goal to get you a project that's above and beyond what a lot of districts are doing. But it's one of those where I think if we don't do our due diligence, and we've kind of already done that with Dr. Supon and his team. Feel pretty confident. We've only had two conversations. One of those is committing to the project and is willing to bring people to the table. But if for some unforeseen circumstances, it doesn't happen, there's no real cost other than time and attention. But on the flip side, going out to the community, you know, it's one of those where you want to kind of keep the foot on the pedal so that those who have been generous enough to commit to the project. You know, we're not selling him an idea that ultimately is gonna not happen at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I do have a question. So when you opened up your presentation, it looks like you're asking the board's permission to go out and kind of solicit some.
Yeah, just this is a discussion to see what the thoughts of the board are. Again, this is one where we've done it in plenty of other places. I think it's one of those in talking with Dr. Supon, it's a goal to have something that's exciting for the district from a community center standpoint. Something that's going to be beneficial for, you know, the student activity standpoint from the classroom component. And then ultimately, you know, in talking with only two of your sponsors, it seems like the community is seeing it as a value add as well. So.
At this time, it appears there's no cost to the district, correct?
No, that's again, we were asked to just kind of present it to the group and get thoughts and feelings. And basically, one of those, if we can show that it is being successful, whatever success looks like to the district, that we move forward. Because again, it's one of those where, you know, talking to the right two people initially is great, but don't want to get it to the point where it's overconfidence. Where we're telling him it's gonna happen and then it isn't. Again, it's no kind of bad downside. Just if you're looking for additional projects down the line, they're probably not going to be the best people to approach. But yeah, no cost right now. Really, it's just if we can go out and continue this momentum we have already and or. You know, maybe feel out if there's any other targets that you may have in the back of your mind for potential sponsors.
Does anyone have a problem with Daktronics approaching any of our constituents?
No, I say go ahead, give it a try.
Well, I would say too, maybe the only kind of confirmation we were looking for is obviously we broke down the cost of the project over a five-year period. Ultimately, it's something where we're trying to get sponsors to see that liability and break it down over five years. But would the district be willing if in agreements, we have that paying for itself? Would you buy it outright and use those contracts to pay yourself back is probably the only commitment we'd look to kind of figure out here tonight if at all possible.
I would say what's bringing this on us and the finance management, we would have to get back with you on that.
For sure. Yeah, no question.
Especially right now with no state budget.
Yeah, no worries. And it's one of those too. We're just kind of feeling out, you know, we talked about a little bit of those promotions before the end of the year. And then ultimately, probably maybe holding off on the gas pedal with meeting with future sponsors. Because again, we're trying to figure out the rules of the game before we kick off and knowing what we can or cannot approach sponsors with. So it's one of those where we'll kind of wait to hear if that is something that we can approve and move forward with. Just so that we're not approaching your businesses to say this is gonna happen, just to maybe not be successful at the end of the day.
I'm just curious, are the, you said six anchors?
Yep.
And half of the founders is your target, your goal?
It is. Yep. And there's, yep.
If, are the boards adaptable? Let's say you had a business out there that wanted to do more than that. Is it adaptable that one board could be sponsor?
So the one board that can be adapted in that scenario would be the indoor boards, the video board. And then we have a secondary fixed digit on the opposite end. The stadium and the baseball, it is not feasible from a structural standpoint. We had to work within the same footprint of what is already up there engineering wise. Would love to say we can add whatever we want wind load wise, but we're kind of hamstrung by the overall footprint of what was already up there.
And we have worked with other facilities, we're working on one currently, that we could add additional signage in your stadium. Just may not be on the video.
Okay. What are everyone's thoughts, concerns?
I'd like to say go ahead, try to get as many sponsors as you can at this point. I mean, if it could pay for itself, I think it's beneficial for you guys, us and the community, so.
I think that the biggest point, we appreciate that and being somebody who was a former athletic director. And it's been athletics and I talked to Dr. Supon quite a bit and Pete's touched on it, is just trying to understand some of the timelines with it. Because as we approach people, like we have two people that are going to make a commitment right now in two simple conversations for a hundred thousand dollars. And if we, if, do we need to get to two hundred thousand dollars? Like what is, what is the timeline for that being done? Is this something that could happen on this side of the calendar? Because then that helps us with our gameplay. That helps you to school because you make law five for some of the incentives, whether it's warranty, whether it's finance, whether it's an additional discount on equipment. Or is this going to go into next calendar year? So we can tell the sponsors that. So we go in and say, hey, this is what we're presenting. The anchor partners are what we're going to hit up first, that the school is committed by it, that we're not on a fishing expedition. We're actually, we're actually working with the school district to get this done, that we were able to go out and say, hey, this is going to be installed spring of two thousand twenty-six. We have six to sell. That if you're not part of the six, it may go to one of your competitors. And then their expectations are going to be that this is going to be installed spring of two thousand twenty-six. Or if we're going to say the fall of two thousand twenty-six, whatever that is, at least that we have some sort of foundation. When we're working with the school district, with Dr. Supon's team, with the athletic director, maybe some folks here. That we're able to give a concrete answer that yes, this is going to happen. Yes, we have two commitments already. Are you willing to sign up with the school here and take one of those fourth partnerships? So that's, that's always the key to me when you're meeting with these things or going out, working with the school district. With sponsorships, with athletics is, is being able to sit there and say, hey, this is the concrete plan. Versus saying that we're on a fishing expedition, that it may happen and then oh, by the way, if it doesn't happen. You know, you're, you're just still making that commitment for X amount of months. It's not fair to the sponsor. So that's kind of the asking part of this discussion would be just kind of clearing a pathway of one, is this what you want to do? And then two, if it's yes, when do we want to do it? And then that just helps our team in Daktronics work with Dr. Supon.
So I definitely want to be very clear going forward before any other of my colleagues answer your question that this is not a formal vote and this is not a formal answer. Or I will give you my opinion. I would like to see this go by June, like start by June of next year.
Okay.
As long as our creative finance manager could figure something out for us, but you know what? I don't think it, I don't know this for a fact, but I don't know if we'd be able to afford the whole project to all of us. You know, so maybe we start small and go big. I do have one question though, if this district ever decides to expand or relocate. And we wanted to move a building or move, change a building, close a building, do we have the capability of that?
We've had those discussions in the indoor and I've talked with everybody. It's like anything else. If you, if you put it up on the wall, you can take it down off the wall. And you can transport it and go from there. Football, the same thing. You can put it up on, you know, it's going on the structure, come off the structure. I think the big thing, you know, moving forward is when that goes, the big thing with these boards are the technology. The technology changes quicker than the equipment gets worn out. So the simple answer is yes. But when you're going into these new facilities, like we're designing these to fit these facilities right now. We get a bigger and better indoor facility, a bigger, better, you know, outdoor football stadium. It may be a situation that we have those conversations then as far as if you want to, you know, have, have new. So it can be done, just depends on the timeline and where we're at technology.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I missed a question about, you said the hardware was roughly four hundred thousand for the equipment?
And installation.
And installate, that includes.
That's giving you content, that's giving you shipping, that's giving you.
So if we had zero sponsors, the total cost to the district would be four hundred thousand.
Correct. Yes.
Right? Okay. So the difficulty I have without being able to go out and sort of look for sponsors is. We really don't know, other than the maximum amount will be four hundred thousand, if the cost to the district after the year will be four hundred thousand or whatever, depending on the amount of. You know, amount of sponsors we get. So it's kind of hard to chicken or egg.
No, that's, that's why we brought it up for discussion because.
You have it, like the Pete's point, like if you want to just share like the Getty story, I think that's.
Well, I was just going to mention too, just, just, is it fair to say we, when we are given the blessing to continue with sponsor conversations? Can we still approach them with the concept of asking for a ten thousand dollar commitment for a five-year term? Is kind of maybe the chicken or the egg discussion which would make the most sense. Otherwise, if it's a fifty thousand dollar check upfront, that's just the rules of the game and parameters we need to work within. We just break it down ideally in the conversations I've had so that the budgets can, you know, as an organization can withstand that as a kind of a. It's something they didn't see coming. So they needed to free up some cash to basically provide for this opportunity. So until we, I think, have any clarity on that, you know, I don't know what we would tell a sponsor when they say, well, how much is the commitment for us to become a part of this project? I know it's, that's why we brought up for discussion.
I was just going to add one thing in, and I think the board needs to consider it perhaps this way. I go to games, I look at these scoreboards. I never really gave it a thought of how many of them are. The technologies come ahead or wow, that's going to need to be changed here very shortly. And I think the, this board needs to consider that, not so much if this is necessary, but when is it necessary?
Sure.
And so there's going to be an outlay of, of, there's either going to be an outlay of money by the district to replace boards. Or we're going to find a way to do it with some sponsorship money or maybe some combination thereof.
And without question, I guess the other thing to consider, I'll go back to this map, but a lot of these customers are getting the point of where we're talking. Like the two sponsors that have committed to this project, when they got and are getting to this five-year point, there's sponsor renewals involved. So, so what was before part of some type of debt service is now completely going back to the district from supporting, you know, athletics in other projects they have in mind. So it's one where we went into it as our sponsors are going to support to make it happen. To this is the main revenue generating arm for our athletics and activities moving forward. So something to consider as well as, again, from, from, been doing this for fifteen years, got two different contacts and both committed on the spot. Makes me seem that the community does support it.
And I think the last point I would make is, as somebody who's been involved a little bit in some stuff like this. It's very easy for folks to say, yes, I'll, I'll sponsor and I'll be involved. It's very hard to say, take my name off. So once you make, once people make those commitments.
Yeah.
It tends to be a good, longer-term.
Yeah.
Solution.
I think so. We do this nationwide, been doing it for fifteen years. We have a ninety percent renewal rate for those sponsors up on the board itself. But again, that's also a good topic to bring up as well. This, these, these aren't going to be handshake type, you know, thank you for your commitment. There, there'll be contractual agreements involved. We have a sample contract for you to review on your end and make sure it's in line with district policy. So it's one where, you know, we're not doing it on trust and faith. We're going to make sure it's an official partnership in a legal capacity. And that's through the district and sponsor. We're, it's, we're not taking a cut of splitter fee. So it's one of those where it's your partner for the future.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very much.
Appreciate it.
Do you have anything?
No, I guess, oh, thank you, thank you, Joe and Pete. Are we okay letting them continue to solicit sponsorships then?
I believe that's the consensus of this board. Yes.
Hundred percent. Yes.
On the lines, and I know it's part of the consideration.
Summer of twenty-six.
That will be the plan if that's in agreement. And then I would say just getting back down to that when they ask, how much is it?
So I'm giving you one of nine's opinions.
Yes.
Actually, we have a very creative, do have a very creative business manager. We have a very creative superintendent. So if these two gentlemen could put it together, create a nice balanced budget with a, with a little bit of surplus for this board. And we approve that in June, I think it'd be happen there soon thereafter.
Okay, that's fair because just so we're clear on that, because it's not like, it's not like, you know. They're on a shelf somewhere and it come out. There's a, you know, there's a lead time, probably about eight to ten weeks with these things. So if you want that in for football season of fall twenty-six, we need to start working backwards on paperwork as far as that's concerned. And construction during the summer, obviously, everybody's still, every, you know, every, every campus, college, high school, middle schools are construction zone in the summer. So that just has to be on the books if you want your opening day football game to have that to do with it.
And I think, again, we're a team of ten, so this is just me, but hopefully within the next month or two, we have a state budget. So our money's released, which will help. And I think, yeah, and I think, you know, the quicker you let us know that, hey, we fulfilled this many sponsorships. That gives the board an idea of a timeline and how we want to move. We could always board approve something to start a different day, you know what I mean? We could board approve it in the spring for June first, July first, you know what I'm saying? But like we could start to pay, like you said, retroactive with the paperwork. So if you could start soliciting the sponsors, I think the goal always would be if you can get it paid through sponsorship would be great.
Yeah.
At what point in the process do we need to commit, you know, contractually to something? When does that come into play?
So essentially, it's, it's going to be with kind of preference. I know we talked about that ten-week lead time, which closer to June you get, it's not going to be ten. It's going to be more like eighteen to twenty potentially. But it's basically when we get that commitment from sponsors, when you're ready to go. It's essentially that contract date's going to start and overlap by one year. So, you know, if it's, you know, July fourth, obviously that sponsor is going to get year-round partnership. What they didn't get on the backend, they're going to get on the front end. It's just when you're ready to tell us. We'll keep you in the loop too as to where the lead times are. But just in knowing, I know you mentioned that June timeframe. It'll probably be likely closer to twenty weeks and it would be ten weeks in terms of lead time.
No, that's it. I appreciate, this was great. I appreciate you guys. I know you're coming from far, well, one's PA, but one's what, South Dakota, right?
Now we'll go Dukes.
Yeah, so I know. But appreciate you guys coming. This helped a lot putting eyes on everything and sharing it with the team. Thank you guys.
And certainly we'll keep the group abreast of any successes we continue to have on the sponsorship end.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, it says a lot about your community, two conversations and two yeses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have my, you want me to do my speech? Yeah. I have another one ready for next week, so. So, good evening Spartans. I want to take a moment to express how proud I am of our incredible district. Each day I'm reminded of the dedication, compassion and pride that define what it means to be a Spartan. From our outstanding staff and talented students that are supportive families and community members who stand beside us. Wyoming Valley West continues to set the standard for excellence, unity and growth. Earlier today, our schools entered an external lockdown as a proactive safety measure. I want to be very, very clear. There was no direct threat made towards any Wyoming Valley West school or student. The decision to initiate the external lockdown was made out of an abundance of caution to ensure that all students and staff remain safe. While law enforcement investigated an issue in the surrounding community. Our staff and students responded calmly and appropriately, following all established safety procedures. As always, our schools remain, I will stand by this comment, remain the safest place for our children to be. And today's actions demonstrate our continued commitment to that priority. At the same time, I'm urging our state leaders to take action and pass a state budget. The longer this process is delayed, the more it strains, the more strain it places on our schools, our students and our community as a whole. Our children deserve stability and support, not uncertainty. It is essential that the state fulfill its responsibility to adequately fund education and ensure that every district, including ours, can continue to thrive. I am also proud to share that Mr. Winsec and Mr. Dikton have written and submitted a two-point-three million dollar PennDOT TASSA grant focused on enhancing safety throughout our community. The grant would provide new crosswalks, updated flashing lights and improved safety infrastructure in heavily populated areas. If awarded, this grant will allow us to partner with local agencies and continue our commitment to ensuring the safety of all students and community members. At Wyoming Valley West, we will continue to lead the way in education, creating dynamic and engaging and forward-thinking learning environments for our students. We're committed to preparing our learners for success in an ever-changing world, empowering them with opportunities that inspire growth, creativity and leadership. I want to take a second again to congratulate our boys soccer team and our girls field hockey team on their district championships. And their hard-fought performances in the state tournament. Your determination, sportsmanship and teamwork represent everything that makes us proud to be Spartans. Lastly, I'm thrilled to announce that Representative Brenda Pugh will be hosting a community event at Wyoming Valley West Middle School on Wednesday, November thirteenth, from six to eight PM. The presentation grooming exploitation, what every community needs to know, is extremely important discussion about keeping our youth safe. Please see the flyer on our website and district Facebook page and help spread the word. We are honored to welcome Representative Pugh to our district for this valuable and timely event. Thank you for your continued support and being an essential part of what makes the Wyoming Valley West School District so special. Together, we will keep moving forward stronger, safer and prouder than ever. We are and will continue to be a destination district that remains Spartan strong. Thank you and always go Spartans.
Thank you, Dr. Supon, very much. And to the point, I'd really like to thank you and all of our staff that.
Yeah, that's a Thursday.
Everything that happened today was great dedication between you and all your staff.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also thank local law enforcement for being throughout and around all of our buildings today. It was huge. Thank you very much. We have no citizens this evening. Committee reports, Mr. Tabas, please.
From an athletic standpoint, we had a committee meeting last week. Really, the main topic, which will be on the agenda, will be the approved, the installation of a stand at the Dana, I mean, at the third ab softball field. The, be purchased by our booster club. And then Dave Cortez will review the installation and where we're putting it, along with McLaughlin will be installing it. So no cost to the district, but Dave will have the ultimate say on where, where we put it and where it gets installed at. Other than that, congratulations to our field hockey and our soccer for making the state playoffs a great season. We did get a notice that our football coach, Coach Delma, has resigned and we will be looking for replacement very soon. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tabas. Mr. Keating, do you have anything this month?
I'm going to save mine for the voting meeting next week. Thank you, Mr. Kamis.
Thank you, Mr. Keating. Mr. McGinley.
Ms. Boak, enforcement, we have several different updates on the policies that we worked on last school year. As you know, we did a great job and went through the whole policy manual. So we have to look at those updates. And two other points of interest would be AI, which I think everybody's talking about and we have to make some decisions. And social media policy. So I'm going to ask Superintendent Supon to set up a meeting so we can look at those, bring them forward to the board. As you know, there's two readings involved. And we'll have a first reading and a second reading for approval. So we should, we'll probably have something ready for the December meeting. For the first round and then hopefully approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Mr. Hardwick, Special Education, do you have anything this month?
Likewise, I'm going to hold off till next, next week, but that also gives me a chance to, I saw Mrs. Barada out there. I am going to reach out and see if we can get a meeting scheduled with the committee between now and next Wednesday. It would be my final meeting, but I think it'd be good just to provide a final update until the committee change is over.
Thank you, Mr. Hardwick, very much. Under buildings and grounds, I know I mentioned the, when we adjourned last meeting, that I'd have some updates. But unfortunately Apollo Group hasn't. I should say the bidders have not concluded their bid yet. So we're still waiting out. We still have some bids out there waiting. If you'll notice on this, this next week's agenda is so back roofing for the garage, wellness center and the rec.
Mr. Kamis? Yes, sir. I have a question. I was looking for Mr. Corris, but he must be busy. A citizen in Plymouth had pointed out the lights at the high school. There's three out. Are they the ones that have the wire that's broke underground?
If, I believe as we had in that, our committee, it's the ones in the parking lot.
Right, they're, they're along the track side. There's three poles there. I stopped on my way here tonight. There's three out. I'm just wondering if that's the three that we determine there's a broken wire underground and how.
Without Mr. Corris to confirm, I couldn't answer your question, but I know he did make that report to us in the committee meeting.
Yeah, I was just wondering where we stood with that. So maybe, maybe he'll show back there.
Director, I'll get you an answer to it. I'll meet with him.
Dr. Supon, could you reach out to Apollo and see where they are and maybe get an update tomorrow as to where we're at? Maybe if there's anything we can possibly get into the next month's, next week's agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, the concern from the citizen was people walk that track and now that daylight savings are here, it's, it's a lot darker earlier.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. General recommended action items, items one through five. Does anybody have any questions?
Number five, is the reason why we're going to the redevelopment authority.
So I'm going to have to, I'll kick this off a little bit, so I can only answer a little bit. So this was the gentleman that gave us a presentation, I believe it was about maybe two months ago. Don't bear with time with me, but say it was two months ago and that was the company that comes in and. They front us the money for our tax dollars and they worry about the collections of the tax dollar.
Right.
With the budget being upside down and us being where we're at, I talked to Dr. Supon, I talked to Mr. Kachar. And thought, well, this might be a good time for us to consider putting this on for next year. Don't think it flows the cash, so we're not borrowing money or looking, it might be a good time for us. So I asked Dr. Supon to have it put on the agenda.
And what are the conditions of the contract with whoever the vendor is?
So again, a contract is for the sale of our delinquent tax claim.
Right.
Through municipal revenue services, but the resolution, they've always gone through the redevelopment authority to get the loan.
Okay, but I guess my problem is that they don't take all the taxes. They take the ones they feel they can collect. They pick and choose a little bit. So are we, we won't know any direct amount because of the fact of future years, right?
Yes, I don't have an amount and, and you won't have a more definitive amount until the year is over.
Right.
Until they determine what the total uncollected tax revenue is. I mean, as far as picking and choosing, I don't know if that's how they work their process or.
From past experience, that's how it's been done, but you know, I'm aware of. And what kind of percentage would they receive because they're going to be the vendor?
They collect that off of the, I don't know how they collect their fee, but I know that what, what, he told me that he will, they will make us one hundred percent solvent in our taxes.
Okay. If it could get a little more detail, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Kachar, could you work on that, please?
I could work. I could reach out.
Please pass that up, disseminate that to the board, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Staff recommended action items, items one through. Nine. Any questions? Mr. Kachar, do you have anything you'd like to present?
No, again, I'm just going to reiterate what Dr. Supon said. It's, you know, it's critical for our lawmakers to pass a budget. We are still okay until the end of the year, I believe. But we are going to have to start looking at some options as a preventative measure in case the budget does not pass by the end of the year.
Mr. Kachar, did we ever receive our audit?
We have not received their audit yet. I've reached out with emails. I was told three weeks ago that they had everything. Now it's going through their peer review process. I've reached out through texts.
I'm just curious. I know a couple of schools, it's starting to trickle in a couple of school districts. I think. Thank you.
Under new businesses, anybody have anything like that? Okay, our next scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, November twelfth, here at seven PM.
I'll turn.